Tyler King. Dwayne Kitts.
Here.
Zachary Marlowe.
Here.
Sue Nance. Rusty Orrick.
Here.
Chris Paul. Derek Sharp. Scott Stanfield.
Here.
Eight present.
I'd like to state that we do have a forum. Richard, we have, what, four budget amendments in front of us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. First resolution, first budget amendment is under 141 General Package School Fund. Grant school services flow-through fund on school sites. Those contract services greater than anticipated, particularly for contract services for year-end events. These funds being appropriated for use accordingly. Dividends increase to miscellaneous refund of $20,000, that being appropriated for contract services. Resolution six dash two also in the General Package School Fund. The need exists to realign fund to provide supplemental summer work for special education psychologists to meet operational needs. Exhibit B, see an increase in psychological personnel at 6,751. Increases in the associated benefit accounts, Social Security 440, State Retirement 609, Florida Medicare 98, with reductions in other contracted services, $4,000. Gas lane of $3,898, $1,010. Six dash three, also in the General Package School Fund. Deals with multiple sites having and created utilization utilities than anticipated. Realignment being made to address these needs. Exhibit C, on the first page of the exhibit, see the various increases in electricity, natural gas, water, and sewer. In total, $64,263 of increases, with biggest one being electricity at the high school of $16,500. Natural gas at the high school of $6,935, the next highest to count.
Chairman. The utilities, is it an increase in rates or is it an increase in usage?
It's more of an increase in usage.
So, the usage has increased at these schools?
Yes, sir.
Is it based on heating and air system and deal with train?
I don't know what the causation was for the increase in utilization.
All right, guys, if we're going to discuss it, we need to go ahead and have a motion in a second. Then we can discuss. There?
Okay, at the second page of the exhibit C, that shows the reductions in order to fund the $64,000. The contracted services being reduced $40,188. Various custodial personnel lineup being reduced $5,000, $10,000, $2500, $5,000, $2500, $4,500. Three medical insurance accounts being reduced to $4,000, $4,000, $12,000 times seventy-five to balance the amendment out. Fourth amendment is under 116 Sideways Sanitation Fund. Sideways equipment grant is specific to each type of equipment being purchased, which results in less grant funds being earned primarily related to the six forty-yard containers, which will cost more than anticipated. Local match fund being increased to enable the purchase of the overall equipment items. Considered for live, the six forty-yard containers and twenty-yard container plans are being realized accordingly. Exhibit D, decrease in the sideways grants of $5,817. In the appropriations sections, the increase in matching share of $3,000, $365. That's being funded by reduction in the unemployment compensation of $3,000, $365. Sideways equipment being reduced from $5,817 to offset the decrease in the revenue balance.
Okay. You have those four budget amendments, but you've gone over them. I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve.
Make a motion approve.
Six one through six four?
Yes.
Okay, a motion by Gobert, have a second. I'm gonna wait and second these motions, 'cause I got a lot to discuss. Okay. Have it segmented by Orrick. Now, Mr. Orrick, the floor is open for discussion.
Let's go back to six one one. What's the other contracted service?
It's primarily for transportation services for different year-end events, field trips, and so forth.
We budgeted in, or they budgeted in, $48,232, and it's increased $20,000, which is almost, almost to that breaking point of being doubled. Money's come out of miscellaneous funds, refunds.
Miscellaneous refunds from the school sites. School sites send money to the Central Office, Board of Education, as appropriated.
And then the?
Through the Board of Education.
So, they planned the field trips and they didn't, I guess they didn't think about it's going to cost them more for the field trips. We're here at the end of the year closing out our money. Six two, said they was needing for five supplemental summer work for a special education psychologist to meet operational needs. Is that something they come up at the end and decided they wanted somebody in the summer program?
Um, yes, no, in the past they've had, in the past they've had supplemental summer work as well.
Are they a contracted service or employed?
Employees.
So, this has happened over the years already? It's just increased $6,000, sorry?
Yeah, $6,751.
$751. And then Social Security and all that, was it any, I'm kind of lost, is it an increase in their salary or is it?
It's for additional work during the summer months.
And is this for the students or for the teachers?
It's for the psychologists doing testing. I don't know if it involves the summer running camps or not.
Okay. And then we'll go back to electricity and utilities. Under the train program, if it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, we contacted, contracted with train, with our heating and air systems. Am I correct that if it went over a certain amount, that they would pick up that loss?
Not to that extent.
Okay, sir. And I apologize, but, you know, there should be a reason. If it's not based on the rate, if it's not been a rate increase, but we've done with the rate increase last year. Natural gas, same way, water and sewer is the same point. And it all seems like it leads relative. Is the schools being used more or have we got problems with the HVACs?
I don't know, I'm just taking great emphasis.
I guess where do we need to direct that question to? Because if we're going to start getting numbers like this, I mean, you're saying sixty, sixty-seven thousand dollars extra to these thirteen schools?
$64,000.
And is the budget, I guess you just don't know this, I guess the budget's been changed to add to this because it's an increase in usage?
Yes, sir.
You know, we started back probably close to twenty years ago. We did it and the school system followed suit for energy savings. You know, 'cause we understood at that one time that if we didn't control our usage, that could kill us as much as anything else could. A lot of lights being left on, a lot of heating and air units being left on, which I think now, my understanding, these are all controlled, you might know, David, these are all controlled by central points, the heating and air systems.
Yeah, they are.
I mean, don't get me wrong, you've got $16,500 for high school usage, and that's for pleasure. Then you jump down natural gas, seven, $7,000 extra for natural gas. And at this time of year, we're in the summer months, spring and summer. So, the only possible way that you could be using natural gas is cook. And I thought we went and changed all that out here to go to dry cooking instead of actually fire cooking, I'm guessing. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then you jump down to the same point, and you get down to Campbell County High School, which is not as much as you'd think it'd be, but $1,155 increase in water usage. And is that based on a leak? I'd just like to know, I mean, I'm almost, we've got to do what we've got to do, we've got to close the year, end of year out for all leaks, but.
Secretary, so, did you do a study at Campbell County High School and found a big leak up there at the end?
There were. If there were, what difference?
As a baby.
I mean, a lot of schools, a lot of schools is, if you got, and I can't recall, but I think there was, and I'm probably wrong, it was way up number four, it's at Campbell County High School. And if you've got two or three of those running costs, and they ain't being repaired, guess what that's going to do? It's going to destroy your budget, because you're not paying just for water, you're paying for sewer on top of that. Wherever drop the water you use, for that price of water, you're paying a little bit more on top of sewer. So, that was the reason behind that resolution that was passed probably in 2007 to date. The school said you passed the '06 here at the county to keep up with, when we go to buy lots, we don't buy for us a lot anymore. We buy something that is more up to date, that's energy saving. We may pay a little bit more today for it, but it saves us a little longer. I just kind of, it's just curious to me, I mean, that's, and I'm sure if you looked at, Campbell County High School was budgeting for $270,000 for electricity this past budget cycle. And you, not you, we, for they, have actually increased $16,500 in usage. Is that, when did this catch that? It wasn't over, was it over the entire year?
It was over the entire year.
Okay. Sorry, I'm done, I think.
Any other questions?
Somebody else may have something.
I have a motion, a Gobert segmented by Rusty Orrick, to approve Resolution six one through six four. Seeing no other questions, roll call, please.
David Atkins?
Yes.
Gobert?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Dwayne Kitts?
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe?
Yes.
Rusty Orrick?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stanfield?
Yes.
Ten, yes?
I state that the resolution six one through six four has passed this committee. Zach, we had talked, I think, last week, and I had checked on about the iPads and the monitors.
Yeah, we, I think we got the quote on the iPad. I think it's right around, we're doing back ten now, and it'll probably be right around noon then.
So, we'll need to do, do we need to do that in this meeting here?
We've already done, I don't know, so I don't know that you have to.
Would you care to carry it?
Well, it has to, the deadline has been, it's issued, and that is Monday, so we don't have time to lay out the information.
What kind of work? Android or iPhone or iPad? Apple?
It's quite interesting, too, that the courthouse is wired up, I mean.
That's my, we're showing them to where we should be able to do that. That we're paying about $700, not, yeah, that we're there, but need to utilize.
It's going to be Wi-Fi, babe? So, if you go take it out there in Parkmont or driving around, you need to pull up some, you're going to have to hotspot it.
Pretty much. Well, I mean, we've got like a eighty-five used.
I'm just joking. I'm joking. It's the Apple iPad Air eleven, eleven inch with entry chip, built for Apple intelligence, liquid display, hundred twenty, hundred twenty-eight gigabytes, twelve MP's, front and back camera, Wi-Fi, six C. Four, it was $4.99 per unit. And they had a, I think the case that goes with it was going to be $19.99 per case. So, you're looking at five hundred for the iPad and twenty dollars for the case that it goes in.
Do you want a motion now, and then you'd have to go ahead and give a pre-approviation, a pre-approviation of the O this week?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve purchasing the iPads, purchase nineteen of them. That keeps it under $10,000 per charge, which ain't need more than that. That gives us two spiders, a distribution with heads and by yourself, but that would be one of the issues.
Okay. I have a motion, we have a second. Segmented by David Atkins. Any questions?
Before you get the other, you gotta turn the old ones in.
Yes, the old ones have to be turned back in, guys.
Are we going to surplus the old ones?
We have to. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
David Atkins?
Yes.
Gobert?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Dwayne Kitts?
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe?
Yes.
Rusty Orrick?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stanfield?
No.
Nine, yes, one, no.
I state that, I've got another motion in time, if I can just assess. I say that motion has passed this committee. How's Zach just up?
I'd also like to make a motion that once we were saving the iPads that are our existing ones, that we start the process and disconnect and the brands and, you know, and barely use.
I'll second the motion.
Do you have a motion by Marlowe, second by Rusty Orrick? Once the new iPads are here, is it to cancel the Horizon?
Yes.
How much you said was the?
I think we're standing between six and $700 a month, so this will save you pretty good some money, maybe other taxes.
Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
David Atkins?
Yes.
Gobert?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Dwayne Kitts?
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe?
Yes.
Rusty Orrick?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stanfield?
Yes, to cancel Horizon's contract and we go on the courthouse, is that the answer?
Ten, yes?
So, I state that, and it also has passed this body.
And, one other thing, this way you get activated in this way, but I'd also like to make a motion to empower the chairman and to get with IT and to look at purchasing new monitors in the court right here, because some of the hidden screens appear to have. I'm a little humble, that was wrong.
I've got a motion to empower me to check with the IT person here to possibly look at purchasing new monitors for our commission meetings. I have a second.
I'll say.
Segmented by Dwayne Kitts. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
David.
Is it necessary that we have a monitor at each station? I mean, I don't know, it just, it's saying, it also seems that the software or whatever that we're using is the same way, outdated. I know that we talked about using some different software before. And I just, with the addition of the new iPads and the new updated software that they have, is there anything that we could look at that's integrated with that that we wouldn't have here? That we could log on to here while we're in a meeting and use our iPads?
There are, I think that there is, the drawback with that is what we currently have, we pretty much own that outright. To go to a new system, it's changed now where you're paying a monthly fee for it. You can't just buy it outright, so I have mixed feeling, I would prefer to update it, but at the same time, I would prefer to go with something that you just might outright instead of paying in place of scratch.
I think everybody would agree with that, is that the, because we know that we can't, is that something that's?
I, that, that's, that's something I could ask Gene, you know.
If we could find something, we could buy, you talk about changing the system, the boat machine system?
Yes.
I remember that we discussed that a few years ago, and I've been getting emails from Gene Whitman.
Yeah, I get one, I'm taking.
It's that fee, but I think, there's a possibility we can use the iPads, but they're tied in, they're wired to that system. I understand, because they're wired to these TVs, and you've got to jump, once it comes unhooked off this, you don't have to feed. It might be that we not, and David makes a point, that we put another one of these there, where we can see the boat as we cast and do a wave of these. Because all these are, the TVs, and you can turn one around and maybe it's lit up, where it would walk the view of people. But then we would see the boat cast, or you could do one on these, these bill ads. And it'd serve the same purpose, because I think two or three of them has went completely berserk for years. And it's not just us, the school board, when they've been using this, they've voted on machines too. Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick, for the members that sit from Tyler down this way on both sides, we can see these screens. If you put a smaller monitor on the back of each of those, on that, you can see that. It's just a, it's just a suggestion.
If you guys are okay with it, I'll check with Gene and see if, you know, that would be possible. If it would, it'd be much better, of course, I agree with that.
I don't like, as far as I said, was I don't want one at all right here. It kind of gets in the way, but, you know, computer monitors are not that expensive anyway. They're not. They're cheap, but you could actually do like David said, and we could see the boats, because all we got to do is see how the boat is cast. And any discussion, I mean, that system that you're talking about, there's different things you could do to that system. And even this right here was set up that if we needed to do a presentation, it would come across those screens and our screens, and we could read.
Anything else, Zach? Okay, I'll check with that, anyone else? Okay, before we adjourn? I have, okay, I received a email from Finance, and it's basically telling us the procedure that we'll need to follow next Monday and on the 26th. And it's, one, is approved budget change resolution. Number two, second attachment, to revise the appropriations for trustee commission in the 151 debt service fund to align with the final 25, 26 allocation of local revenue among the various funds. This will conclude the committee's work on the approval of the non-school funds. Do I need to make a motion?
There was a motion on the floor empowering the chairman to check with IT for placement of monitors.
We got a vote.
Oh, okay, I, I, do you want to vote, you just want to?
Let you do it.
Just let me do it.
I'm good with the strong.
Okay, Zach just want to draw the motion. And I'll check on it. Also, pursuant to the approval of the 25, 26 school budget by the Campbell County Board of Education, through meeting on June 6, 2026, approve the 25, 26 school budget for the 141 GPS school fund, the 142 federal project school fund, and the 143 central cafeteria school fund, as reflected in column seven of each fund's applicable detailed budget document, with the 25, 26 local revenue maintenance of effort established at $10,579,850, which exceeds a minimum requirement local match of $9,514,847 by $1,065, $1,065,003, which basically, guys, we're over a million dollars above maintenance effort, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Need a motion, or you got to review it and then come back to motion?
Yes, I'll, I will. Number three, approve the 2025 tax levy resolution, third attachment, with the 25, 26 profit tax rate remaining the same at 1.2156, and recommend approval of the same by the county commission at the recess meeting on June 26, 2025. Number four, approve the 25, 26 appropriation resolutions, fourth attachment, which combines appropriations across the various funds totaling $108,206,23, and recommend approval of the same by the county commission at their recess meeting on June 26, 2025. Approved, number five, approve the 25, 26 consolidated budget and the individual fund budget stake resolution, fifth attachment, and recommend approval of the same by the county commission at their recess meeting of June 26, 2025. Richard, I need a motion for the budget change resolution number two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion for the, no, that's the one with money for trustees.
I can motion, we have a.
I have motion for Orrick.
Second.
Segmented by Stanfield. Vote, please. Who?
David Atkins?
Yes.
Gobert?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Dwayne Kitts?
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe?
Yes.
Rusty Orrick?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stanfield?
Yes.
Ten, yes?
Approve a budget change resolution number two, second attachment, dealing with trustee's commission as fast as required. Moving on down, number two is dealing with the school budget. Approve the 25, 26 school budget by the Campbell County Board of Education, through meeting on June 6, 2026, and it's basically the 141, 142, 143, as outlined in column seven. A question?
I'll wait.
I'll need a motion first. Motion to approve. Have a motion by Atkins, have a second.
Second.
Segmented by Marlowe. Okay, Rusty, you have a question?
How much money's fully took out on this, like, on balance this year?
Million, twenty thousand, four fifty-six to service debt service.
Or million?
A million, twenty thousand.
And what's going to happen next year, because it's one-time use?
Debt service has a set, has a defined timeframe, so depending on funding next year, maybe looking at using equity for debt service next year as well.
So, that being able to use it again next year?
Potential.
And on the county commission side, you just read off that we've got over a million dollars, and I think that's kind of dropped, isn't it, correct? It went down about $200,000. Is that a million, twenty thousand dollars coming out of that same, or the drop from a maintenance of effort, above maintenance effort? Is that also a million, twenty thousand?
Is that also a million twenty?
Million twenty, so, uh, let me back up. But also appropriating the community equity funds for the sports complex, and it's one, one, one million?
Pardon me, I'm sorry?
But also appropriating the reserve funds or the community funds for the sports complex.
So they're going to spend that reserve for, for the school budget this year?
It's budget for use.
So how much money did they end up saving with all these cuts?
Two million eight thousand two forty-five personnel. Then they made a slight reduction, Cap Valley, get it to two million eighty-two thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars.
So it's over...
Close to two point one.
Plus a million twenty thousand dollars added on to that, on that savings. My breath, my understanding was like two point eight million dollars that they was in the hole?
Two point one.
Two point eight. What happened with the two point eight to get two point one? Is that coming out of what? Is that savings from positions, or was that savings through?
Savings on the...
Savings of effort that we have above?
Savings on the positions, come in at two million eight thousand two forty-five. And then reduce Cap Valley, seventy-four thousand three thirty-two, get reductions of two million eighty-two thousand five seventy-seven, which is essentially two point one million that's been discussed. The use of the million twenty thousand for debt service would get you on up to the three point one billion dollar mark.
So the two point eight that was discussed two months ago was went to three point one million?
Yeah. Some of that increase was on the utilities, once we sold...
Sixty-seven thousand dollars on the utilities, and I guess that's been laid out in that quarter of the budget next year for the increase of usage, and then plus the increase in rate, because I think the rates are all changing on all that ones, my interpretation.
Yes.
It is on the county side, what I'm saying on the county side.
Same on the school side, looking at, I think it was three percent on electricity, three percent water and sewer, and twenty percent on natural gas.
Twenty percent on natural gas increase, rate increase.
Yes.
And then we've got this, also this usage that's appeared from over, this jump, and that's been budgeted in for that change too?
Yes, sir.
Somebody needs to get a great gra, a grip on this, on this usage, I'm sorry, the usage. There's a whole lot you can't do about the rates, but I'm telling you right now, you can turn, if you're paying benefits too high, you can cut back.
Which I've looked at.
Anyway. I think I was, I was covering myself.
Zach?
Okay, just a couple questions, and position wise, how many positions did they lose?
It was a total of fifty-one positions that were changed around, of those, I think there was thirty-two position abolishments of some type or another.
And how many, you may not know, I think it's F11, 1020, was the last time I fast recall, how many positions did they have to abolish that year?
I don't recall.
Okay, I'd just like to know the compares on that. And then two, what, take sure that it's next year, are they working on a similar predicament next year?
Depends on their student count and what the state does with the TSA amount per student.
Okay, but provided that the TSA amount increases about the same as it did current year, next year, is it a safe assumption that they're working on a similar predicament?
Uh, they could be, it'll depend on the TSA funding and their student options.
Okay, and are they aware that they're actually working at this? I would imagine that they are, but...
I would imagine that they are based on this.
Because I know there was something said that I didn't know, I haven't, wouldn't know that you're in role, that's fine, but that's beyond me, that's, okay. I'd love that answers my, and one other thing I will just say, and if I'm not mistaken, I think it's on the, like, official county county, I haven't known that, but made it last year because of the same office, can't, so.
Anything else?
I'd like that scott.
Any other questions over here? Motion for...
I got a, I got a question. Richard, could you go over again on the sports complex, what did they decide on that and reiterate on that, please?
It's, it was busted from the equity account. A million one hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and seventy-one, made capital for the CCHS multi-sport complex. It dropped to equity because it had been used, so it's being re-appropriated for use during 25-26.
Okay. Can I kind of see where this is going? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other discussion?
Are they getting fail-safe rid, that's put in place in the school system when they reach, I'm sure they are, on the budget, on the finance side, that gets to a position, because I know they can hire positions throughout the year. And I'm sure that has to be, there's a fail-safe probably in place with, within their budget constraints.
They would have to have, they would have to have funds in order to avoid a position of this...
You know, I've sat all the way through, when you give, you get money from the federal government, and we love to get money from the federal government state, and it can be a blessing and it can be a curse. And, and it's been a blessing and a curse to us on the commission with our funds, it's been a battle. But I've read somewhere that there really wasn't no fail-safe in place for this, and I, and I disagree with that. Finance is always, on the county side, it's always gave us a fail-safe when we get to a limit. And we know, I'm sure the sheriff sitting here, he's department, he elects sheriff, he takes care of the department. I'm sure when his line item starts dwindling away, he gets a phone call from the finance, am I correct? Well, some things happen, it's like utilities, you know, you have a water leak, it shoots its way up. You have a water heater that's messed up, it shoots the water up in the utility, natural gas, whatever. Or if you decide you've got a lot more trouble going on, and the fuel line item is running out in January, sheriff gets a phone call, or that department.
I know, actually, in the county's panel, the utilities go up for water and sewer specifically, if it goes up abnormally, it should contact Stan to say, hey, what's going on site ABC, the usage is up spiked.
But it's over, I'm talking overall, all the budget line items, they have a fail-safe at the finance department, which has always picked up to finally call and say, hey, short, running short on this type of line item funded, we need to try to capture this and slow it down, do something to, am I correct? Because the money coming through S R and Arco with school funds was not a recurring money flow revenue stream. And it's come, it's got us to that point in the road, and I say us, because here we are not acting the budget, and that's pulling out equity. I've seen equity being pulled forward, the making its bait, and we're getting into some serious times financially in this country, and we all, we all worry about it. Costs is going up, wages are staying the same, so, but anyway. But they are a fail-safe in place, and it's through finance, and it works.
It's through the appropriations.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion by Atkins, second by Marlowe, correct? And it is... Okay, to approve the County Board of Education school budget for 25-26 as the 141 GPS school fund, the 142 federal project school fund, and the 143 central cafeteria school fund, as reflected in column seven of each document.
Mr. Chairman, one more question, I have visions of that, but if this does not pass, the school budget not pass, and we stay in the overall school budget. Just saying, the next step is, we've got a deadline of June the 30th, pass the school budget? And if that don't take place, then they operate on the same budgets they did last year?
Yes, but the change in legislation, there's no longer the continuing resolution.
Right.
Continued to operate.
On the budget they had previous year, minus the federal funding through grants, because it's no longer there.
Some of the federal funding is no longer there.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing the, vote please. David Atkins?
Yes.
Gil Baird?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Dwayne Kitts?
No.
Zachary Marlowe?
Yes.
Rusty Orrick?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stanfield?
No.
Eight yes, two no? I'd state that the County Board of Education school budget for 25-26 school year funds, 141, 142, and 143, as reflected in column seven, has passed this committee. Will be gone down, I need a motion to approve the 25-26 tax levy resolution, which tax rate remains the same at a dollar and twenty-one point five six cents. Motion, second by Stanfield. Any questions?
Taxes stays the same, no increase on the commission side, raise the taxes this year.
That is correct. Roll call, please. David Atkins?
Yes.
Gil Baird?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Derek, Dwayne Kitts?
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe?
Yes.
Rusty Orrick?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stanfield?
Yes.
Ten yes? I'd state that the tax levy resolution, which is the property tax rate remains the same at a dollar point two one five six cents, has passed this committee. Will be gone down, approval of the 25-26 appropriation resolution with combined appropriations across various county funds totaling $108,206,023. entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for order. Second by Atkins. No questions? Vote please.
Her name, she says that I'll reach remote.
Yes.
Gil Baird?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Dwayne Kitts?
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe?
No.
Rusty Orrick?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stanfield?
No.
Eight yes, two no? The approval of the 25-26 appropriation resolution with combined appropriations across various funds totaling $108,206,023 has passed this committee. Will be gone down. Approval of the 25-26 consolidated budget and the individual fund budget statement resolution, attachment recommend approval. entertain a motion?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion for order?
I'll second.
Second by Dwayne Kitts. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call, Richard. David Atkins?
Yes.
Gil Baird?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Dwayne Kitts?
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe?
No.
Rusty Orrick?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stanfield?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no? I'd state that the approval of the 25-26 consolidated budget and individual fund statement resolution has passed this body. Richards, or anything else?
I know, Mr. Chairman, I think that's it.
Okay, and we'll read these again on the, at the commission meeting next Monday night, is that correct, for the 26?
Uh, they'll be for the 26.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Rusty?
Uh, the EMA, the money that we held back, that on the surplus items that was sold to the sheriff's department, what's the timeframe? We have to have those POs in by next week, or October 30th?
P O cut off, I think it's mid-June, June 16th? And the amendment was never approved on the EMA.
So the 16th is our commission meeting, is that right? Is it?
Yes. Yeah. That's May.
Next month is the 16th, so everything has to be closed out by Monday the 16th. You call a meeting at the EMA, am I correct, builds and grounds?
Thursday night.
Thursday night. So I think that's a good, good point in time to make a recommendation, why we move that way for now. I've sat all the way through, I don't want it to go back, and I don't want to go back either, we'll have to find a place to spend it, we'll have to use the mayor's overseer EMA, we have EMA director, so I think our thoughts was, is what was being purchased, am I correct? I think so, yeah. So Thursday night, we'll have, hopefully, builds and grounds will have some kind of recommendation off of the mayor to expel those funds. Have you found out, can you find out, Richard, what the criteria for, for that funding, if once it's on its lifespan, and it's made its lifespan, you surplus that item, the money goes back to the federal government, or?
My understanding from what we've looked at previously, the fund being returned to homeland security if it's not utilized.
If it's not utilized, and are they a list of utilization that has to be used for, or can we buy a bubble gun?
Have to qualify under the homeland security guidelines.
So anything that falls under that security guideline for protection of the county, if it's radios, or antennas, or anything like that, or specific vehicles, equipment, anything that falls in that line? What about storage units?
Wouldn't think so, I've had.
Under EMA, yeah. We'll figure it out, can you find out for us for sure?
That's okay.
Anyway, do you need a motion, whether there's nothing to stop this? We have no POs, everything will be good till Monday, or Monday night, am I correct?
You will be, you will be bringing something?
I will bring something, we'll bring it out.
About building the grounds? Whatever comes out of building grounds on Thursday, if members elect to extend the funds, then the mayor and EMA director will be able to do a requisition on Friday, and purchase a little bit, you probably cite that. So you'll be able to make the Monday deadline.
Okay.
For whatever comes out of that meeting.
I think it was a side by side that was wanting to be purchased with it, is that right, Mayor?
We talked about that at one time, yes.
And what kind of side by side was it going to be? Because eleven thousand dollars ain't gonna get you much of a side by side.
I don't know.
And was any fund that was going to be matched with it?
Yeah, we had, we had a lot of it was going to match with it, but some kind of...
I'm, myself, I can speak for the commission, I think that was kind of what stopped us from expelling the funds, because it was done through the surplus sale through the sheriff's department. So I think that's what quite turned everything into what we're up. So I think that's what, I turned everything into that point in the road.
So as of Thursday night, maybe if you guys have something, you're the committee, you'll carry it next Monday night before you make a motion?
Recommendation, clear?
Yeah. Anything else, guys?
Motion adjourned.
Richard, we're good? And adjourn, guys take five minutes before coming up and turning.